Lord, we come before you down. We thank you so much for today. Thank you for our family and our friends and our work friends and our work families. We thank you, Lord, so much for the gift of Easter, the miracle of Easter. Your Son has risen and is died through our sins so that we made it. And we pray that everybody knows your Son and knows what the Easter season is about. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings again. Help us to do the work that you see that in our lives and glorifies you in your name. We thank you, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five is citizens to be heard. Do we have anybody signing up to escape this way?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chakmet.
Good morning, Court. Well, it's a good gory estate for everybody with all the rain and everything. And Judge going to sign off on this check for this hard work y'all been doing. I'm glad citizens are going to get what they've been needing. I'm just real sorry it took them so long. I wish y'all had been able to get to them a little bit sooner instead of it all of a sudden being put like constituting a state of emergency if it had done. Y'all, I hope y'all spend the money well, and I hope y'all are real transparent about everything that y'all going to be doing with where it was and where y'all were moving to, and you're a little more transparent about stuff. It should be nice. People probably would like to hear on that. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. This week, did you have any others to sign? Item number six, discuss slash see possible action for the proclamation recognizing April 2023 as national sexual assault awareness prevention month. Bobby Joe Robinson from Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter. Well, we got a little.
It's too loud.
Every sixty-eight seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. In Texas, two and five women and one and five men are victims of sexual assault. And in fiscal year 2022, the Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter rendered 1,422 services to 370 survivors of sexual violence. Whereas according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin School of Social Work, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and only 10% of rapes are ever reported to the police. Whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas national and community organizations, private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and committed for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve in the prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses, and the private sector and the media are urged through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault.
Now, therefore, we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Month. Cars County and all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideals of victims and those working towards awareness and prevention and by participating in community efforts. And witness whereof we have here at you set our hands this eleventh day of April 2023. And I will sign. Do you want to take a picture? Yes, yeah. Get Commissioner to sign it and then come on right here. Okay, can everybody here be okay? Let me turn it up a little bit. If you have some good back there. Item number seven is to discuss approve, disapprove the county participation in the opioid settlements with Walgreens, Allergen, CBS, Walmart, and authorized Judge Hetkey to sign the subdivision, participation, and release form. Ms. Tapia, I know that we talked about this opioid, and it's, I think that, by person, if I'm wrong, we got a little less money than we thought initially we would get. However, it's going to be continuing to come in in smaller payments.
Yeah, that would be like eighteen years.
Yes.
And this is just authorization to sign off the latest releases for this Walgreens, Allergen, and I believe Walmart.
Yes, that's correct. CBS is welcome. Need a motion to approve that.
Move that we approve item number seven to second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. You can vote that. Carry. And item number eight is to discuss approve, disapprove the corrected resolution designating Jennifer Tapia the authorized official for the Victim Assistance Coordinator Grant for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Is that what you want to talk about that?
Yes, last one that was signed had the wrong financial year on it. It had 2022, 2023, and they notified me of that. So this is just correcting it to the correct financial year, which is 2023, 2024.
Discussion to the court.
Make a motion to approve. Item number eight is presented.
Second, correct. A motion in the second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, I agree. Item number nine is to discuss approve, disapprove the bank depository contract for two years or for four years. A four-year contract with the option of negotiating terms after two years has the option of negotiating terms after two years. Bye.
Good morning. Our depository contract is up August of this year. Last year, we went in and extended our two-year contract so we can, we have the option of either going a two-year or a four-year. If we do a four-year contract, after two years, we can go back and negotiate with the bank any interest rates we get on our accounts or our CDs. Right now, we do not have any CDs in the bank because we have such a large amount of money that kind of discouraged us from doing that. So we need to either go a two-year or a four-year. I suggest a four-year and then go back after two years and just negotiate the rates.
I agree with that.
Well, item two, the next two items are going to take, ask which one we want to do.
So we need to approve, no, we need to approve item eleven.
So item, the one that says the two-year contract.
Nine is to just discuss.
Yes.
Ten is to discuss approve, disapprove the county to advertise for bank depository contract for two years.
Which we won't vote on that one.
We'll disapprove that because we're not going to, we're not going to do the two years. So item number eleven then is to discuss approve, disapprove the county to advertise for bank depository contract for four years. We need a motion to approve that.
Do we need to vote on ten to disapprove?
No, I shouldn't say for a minute.
Do you know we can, we can elect him to sign. So item number eleven, we need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve as presented. Item number seven.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second. Second, by Commissioner.
So Judge, I'll get with you. It has to be on your letterhead to advertise.
All right, so all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
I'm so sorry. We don't vote on item number nine yet. I think we should.
We discussed.
I think we should vote to approve bank depository contract for four years, and then we voted to advertise that. I think we should vote, no, four years first.
I think you're right. Yeah, I think you're right. So we'll go back on record for item number nine. We need to vote to approve a contract for four years.
I move that we. I move that we approve bank depository contract for four years. I'll second.
Okay, and so we will vote on that. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed that? Okay, and then item number ten, it said no action. Item number eleven, we approved to advertise for the four years. You got all that good, Squeaky? Thank you, Commissioner, for catching that. All right, item number twelve is to discuss approve, disapprove the interlocal agreement between Carls County and Fall City Volunteer Fire Department in regard to the housing of an EMS apparatus and response personnel located at 107 Cooper Street, Fall City, Texas, 78113. We got it. Okay, we did it.
Good morning, Court. Yes, today is a great day for Carls County and also the citizens of Fall City area as well. So been working hard with Mrs. Tapia and getting her legal advice, as well as that of Chief Duke and the Fall City Volunteer Fire Department's membership. We are at a point today that we are happy, both parties are happy. The most recent court prior to this one, Chief Duke had requested that city council just be aware of the document and have their legal counsel look at it as well, to which it's been completed. So you should have a copy of that document that has been circulated to you. But this is some points of interest really quick. As far as duties and responsibilities of the Fall City Volunteer Fire Department, really just providing space for one apparatus, apparatus bay with electrical hookups, et cetera, as well as sleeping quarters, kitchen area, access to parking, et cetera, et cetera. That responsibility as far as county is concerned, again, the biggest negotiation thus far related to the language was related to the cost sharing of the excess utilities that are being taken on by the Fall City Volunteer Fire Department. So the document states that on a biannual basis, the average of the six months prior period will be averaged out, and anything in excess of what that utility usage was prior to our occupancy of that building will be the responsibility of the county. That being said, that negotiation is going to be taking place between both parties prior to agreeing to payment. So we didn't have an actual dollar amount to put on paper because we don't know what the utility charges are going to be until we get into that building. So hence why we wanted to do a six-month period and look back over that six months, average it out, what the increase was versus what the average was prior to our occupancy. Everything else is pretty well just standard issue legal language, insurance-wise. They're going to have their responsibilities for their building. We're going to have responsibilities for our apparatus and personnel. Carls County still retains the rights to the employees, apparatus, et cetera. Related to the term, last thing, the document's good for a five-year term. Automatic renewals built in every single year. If for whatever reason we need to terminate it, it's just thirty days notice and writing, together with the judge or the Fall City Volunteer Fire Department. So we're requesting approval of this document today and partially execute it on behalf of the county. And then I'll provide that document to Chief Duke so that the president, as well as their secretary, as well as Chief Duke, will place their signatures on the document and then fully execute it. I'll provide it back to Mrs. Squeaky for her filing. It's a great day. We're excited. The building is not yet ready. Last I talked to Chief Duke was about thirty days out. They're still needing to do fixtures and finish the flooring. And outside of that, we literally have appliances and furniture, majority of the furniture, ready to move in. So at a moment's notice, we will begin the process of moving in, and we'll keep the court apprised to that. But as an example, yesterday, we had thirteen calls for service for books were in that little piece of Carls County where we're calling Station Three, which will be based out of Fall City, would have been their response jurisdiction. So having that truck there would significantly reduce response time, not only to those calls, but any call in the future. We're excited about the potential. And to decompress our current Station One location in Kennedy, it'll be much needed.
It's long time ago, I think, Katie and Raymond and I started talking about this a year.
A little year ago.
The wonderful things, wonderful, wonderful service that we're going to be able to provide to the northern end of the county.
Absolutely.
Thank you to all those that put in the labor to do this.
Absolutely, man. Huge thank you to Fall City Volunteer Fire Department. They have done anything and everything that they could have done to accommodate us in a very tiny manner. They're very excited and understanding.
Any other discussion from the court?
Okay, we need a motion to approve. I move that we approve interlocal agreement between Carls County and Fall City Volunteer Fire Department in regard to the housing of an EMS apparatus and response personnel located at 107 Cooper Street, Fall City, Texas, 78113.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Thank you, Court. Item number thirteen is to discuss approve, disapprove to approve and authorize Carls County Judge Wade J. Hetkey to execute and sign the agreements of purchase and sale for 1178 FM 1353, Carls City, Texas, 78118, seller Champion X LLC, purchaser Carls County. Purchase price $850,000, earnest money $8,500. Title company Stewart, title broker and CBRE Incorporated. Commissioner O'Sullivan, Commissioner Miss.
Good morning. Good morning. We've been working on this for a while, and we have an agreement of purchase and sale. There was some things here that we had to redline. We got together with our county attorney, Jennifer, and we redlined a couple of lines here, sent it back to them. They agreed on it. They brought it back, sent it back to our attorney. Was everything okay with this agreement of purchase and sale?
All the changes that we wanted are in there.
Everything is good. Okay. If this is agreed on today, if this is agreed on today, we have three contractors that would be coming in right after this, and it would be an appraiser, an inspector, and a Phase One environmentalist. So we are going to do our due diligence on making sure that this is the right purchase for the county, a good purchase for the county. This is, if we do agree on this, we're still going to check the property, the land, the building, the structure of the land and all that, and wait to get response from these professional contractors. With that being said, I would like to make a motion for item number thirteen to approve and authorize Carls County Judge Wade J. Hetkey to execute and sign the agreement of purchase and sale for 1178 Farm Market 1353, Carls City, Texas, 78118, seller Champion X LLC, purchaser Carls County. Purchase price $850,000, earnest money $8,500, title company Stewart, title broker CBRE Incorporated.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. The only discussion that I had is for Ms. Tapia, and this is binding us into a legal contract.
This, well, this is the, for the purchase and sell agreement to, so they can start doing the inspections and everything. So we still have, under the other one that we approved, if there's, you know, something that goes wrong or whatever, they retain the $1,000. We get refunded or.
Seventy-five hundred bucks.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, yes.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor can signify by raising their right hand. I'm obviously opposed to it. However, I do want to say Commissioner O'Sullivan and I talked about this. I am your elected county judge. I am the county judge of this county, and it is my, it is my job to, to do what the court directs me to do. Even though I disagree with this, the court as a whole is going to approve this. And so I will put my signature on this, even though I disagree with it. Okay? Just want to make that clear. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank y'all. Item number fourteen is to discuss approve, disapprove the presentation and approval of the fiscal year 2022 Annual Independent Audit by Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates. I am the author of this. However, I cannot tell you anything about this other than what Phil and Tom and I talked about last week. But I'm not going to bore you with the things that I can tell you about it. We have CPA here that talks about, which is Phil. So I'll do the boring.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to give you a very high level, but if you have a question, just let me know. Our job is to make sure that this annual report that I've killed a bunch of trees for you in front of you is accurate so that when you give it to the citizens, they know the numbers in here, and somebody else has looked at this as a third party to say they're good. So we've got our due diligence. We questioned those numbers, and we agreed that these Spanish segments are accurate, which is obviously what we want. While we're doing that, we might come across any hickies that we think you need to be doing better or anything we think you should be improving on. We didn't have any major findings like that in the report. As a part of this, last year, you spent over the threshold for your CTIP grants, so we had to do some state compliance testing on that grant. We didn't have any findings in there. Also, you spent over the federal threshold this last year, so you had to have a federal single audit to look at the compliance requirements. However, you could do a shorter option for this last year related to the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we did a compliance examination on that, which is the other option that you were allowed to do. And so we're looking at how you spent the money. We didn't have any compliance findings on that as well. We did get some new information yesterday. I just want to confirm with you to make sure that we have our understanding right in the financial statements, is that, my understanding is that you took the revenue loss option on the American Rescue Plan, which allows you to spend it on more things, but you haven't yet identified anything that you want to spend that on. Is that accurate?
Yes, because I think that it gave us three years to spend it. Is that correct? Do you remember that, five?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
And more things.
Correct.
Easier to spend. So there's a letter that accompanies the audit report. It's a one-pager that's floating in there. That's the compliance examination. It just says that we looked at and we agree it's in compliance with how you've spent it so far. And the other letter has some required communications to use, only a couple of things in there that I was going to point out. And one of them is a mistake that was made in the prior year on the payroll accrual. There's a payroll that you do at the end of the year that crosses both years, and there's a little bit too much payroll that was put in 2022 that should have been in 2021. It's just a timing difference. It's not big enough to reopen last year and fix it, but it's big enough that we tell you about it. So it's in the letter. And then on the last page, the recommendations you have last year are all removed except for one, and it's just a best practice thing to consider, and that's your reports offer for your JPs. It'd be great if the county was on one platform that was centralized, that you could mainly streamline the deposit processes, what I'm interested in, so that when they bring you those deposit reports, you can tie them to your general ledger and make it more consistent that you get that all in there. Just something to consider, not a requirement of any kind. On the financial statements themselves, I'm just going to do some highlights, and you can just listen. Only two things I'm going to touch on. On the general fund side, your revenues were very comparable to the year before. You had a settlement in the prior year that was basically replaced by an increased sales tax this last year. But you brought in more money than your budget anticipated, and you spent 3.8 million less than you budgeted, so you were under budget. A lot of that was some corporate acquisitions that you didn't accomplish. So there was a building purchase that you were going to, it didn't happen, and then the annexed building that you were going to do some work on, that didn't happen. But your spending overall was down in 2022 from 2021. So you added 4 million to your general fund fund balance this last year, which got you to 41 million, over 41 million in your general fund. That's about three and a half years saved up in your general fund. You didn't anticipate reducing that 5 million for 2023, but you'll still have, obviously, a lot in that fund balance. On the Roden Bridge side, you did spend a little bit less this last year, and you brought in more money from the CTIP grant you talked about. And so you did add 5.8 to the Roden Bridge fund balance to get you to just under 25 million in Roden Bridge. So both your two main funds have very healthy fund balance in them. Those are all the highlights I wanted to get. Be happy to answer any questions or.
Okay, Court, have any questions for Phil? Yeah, thank you, Phil, for doing all of that non-dumb stuff to me. So we need a motion to approve the presentation and the approval of the fiscal year 2022 Annual Independent Audit by Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates for the contract.
I move that, yeah. We approve presentation and approval of that file. To handle independent audit by Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates, BC.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. This approves of that. Item number fifteen then is to discuss approve, disapprove the fiscal 2022 Agency Accounts Audit and Recommendations.
All right, good morning, Court. I passed out a copy of my report. So basically, the agency accounts or accounts that some of our elected officials have in their custody, I mean, their custodianship, that we have to report on an audit that Phil reports. So I audited the county clerk's office for, because, um, agency accounts, district clerk, the tax assessor, and then the sheriff's department. So the county, and I visited with county clerk on these amounts. There's four different items on here that I'm making a recommendation, as we did last year, to close these accounts because they have been dormant for years and years and years. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we put those back to the general fund, which is our bail bond account, the 81st District probation account, and there's a CD that's been hanging out before Carol took office. She wants to keep the restitution account open so she can kind of go through if there's any outstanding restitutions that we need to pay out. So she said she'd work, she's working on that with my office right now to try to get that resolved by the end of the year. On the district clerk, she has two small accounts as well that have been existed prior to them taking office. So there's a telesupport account for 1,015,04, and then there's an exit proceeds account that require a quarter, I believe, to get that money released and closed out. Another recommendation I made on the district clerk's office right now, when she pays amounts out for taxes and so forth, she gets a cashier check. Well, we don't have a dual signature on that, so I'm not sure if there's a way of getting a dual signature like I and I sign all checks. Carol has her deputy sign her checks as well. So I'm going to work on a process on that. The other thing that we took on this year was the tax assessor. We actually went and got them set up on QuickBooks Online, so they're no longer having to write checks, and everything is written through the system, recorded in the system. And I gave y'all a copy of the QuickBooks printout as of September 30th of 2022. So basically, at the end of the year, whatever money is in those three bank accounts should equal whatever we owe to the different entities. So when we started the project on October 1st of 2021, all our overall monies were short like 26,000 or 1865. Because I don't think it's ever been looked at to the degree that we're looking at it right now, looking at every item that was brought in, every item that was paid out. If I'm not mistaken, ours, they looked to make sure what's brought in and so forth, but.
And you can correct me wrong, Phil.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as, I'm not sure y'all true up the bank balances at the beginning of the period like I did on this. So what, talking with Phil, we're going to go back one more year and see if this 26,000 number might have accumulated over years and years and years.
Instead of just a one-time.
Yes, yes. And then if that's the case, then the next remittance back to the county, we would just short the remittance back to the county by that amount so that her numbers all true up. But we have access to this where we can look at this. Tim, you can, Alman will help us go through all this and bring in reports and so forth. I did the same thing in Wilson County. It really did help them out tremendously because that way we can see if we overpaid or underpaid an entity and so forth. Because that way we can see if we overpaid or underpaid an entity and so forth. But I'm happy that we're there, and that's what I've been working on for the last year. Sheriff's Department, we already went over the commissary audit back in January of this year. So that's all that I have to report to the court on this.
Get that, Tom. Thank you. Any discussion from the court? Motion.
I make the motion to approve item number fifteen, which is approved fiscal year 22 agency accounts audit and recommendation.
We've got a motion in a second, all those in favor, shake your right hand. All right, thank you, Tom, thank you, Phil. Item number sixteen is the consent agenda. We have our minutes from February fourteenth, February twenty-eighth, and March fourteenth. And we have reports from constables precinct one and precinct three. We have our justice of the pieces, reports from precinct one, two, and four, and our masons department as well as our sheriff's department. And we also have budget amendments, VA 2023-11, general fund 100 slash Roden Bridge 5200. By any support or any of that, if you can, we'll talk about those in the next agenda. Approve all these in the motion.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, all those in favor, shake your right hand. You guys opposed that? Need to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, we'll move to item number eighteen, for the commissioners to give their updates. I want to thank the Roden Bridge Department, and specifically, some, it's like all gentlemen here that worked over the Easter weekend. As well as our first responders with all the rain, sheriff's department, we had wrecks, we had fires, we had flooding. And so, Wayne, I asked Wayne to provide me with the names of our Roden Bridge guys that, that worked through their Easter weekend, that took time away from their families as well. I know that Casey can provide me a list, and Sheriff can provide me a list of folks that worked as well. But our Roden Bridge guys that, that were out in the rain, putting up barricades, looking at roads. I had lots of folks that, that were sending me pictures of, of roads and problems with what used to be roads, that are no longer roads. The Albert Damboa, Ruben Guzman, Severo Salas, Isaac Salas, Bobby Jones, Martino Mendoza, Benito Perez Jr., Albert Ray, Omar Rios, Benito Perez Senior, Dan Gillie, Alfonso Torres, Lynn Villanueva, Danny Slias, Ronnie Garian, Sammy Mendoza, Wayne Geester as well. I talked with Wayne and I talked several times throughout the, the phase of the flooding event. Thank you all. That, especially with Easter, you know, anytime it's a weekend, but when it falls on an Easter weekend like that, you are getting away from your family. And traditionally, that's, that's what Easter should be about, as well as some of these other holidays. So thank you all for doing that and, and missing time for your family to take care of the county and, and the residents of the county. So we'll do commissioners' updates, starting with precinct two, since Commissioner Giffick is out.
All right, well, West Lindsey was Corns County Day Capitol, that was hosted by State Representative Ryan Gilliam. And it was attended by Commissioner Geester, Tom Dootby, Judge Dylan Ginnam, Daisy Villanueva, and Tom Dootby. And it was also attended by Garrett and Ryan Kepetney, Sarah Moack, Emily Hyde, Jerry and Sammy Pusky, Olivia, and Audrey Phillips. And Kevin Finner. We all were hosted by Representative Gilliam, he's very gracious. He took us all to the House of Representatives floor. Where he read a proclamation recognizing Corns County, Lacy Pusky, Dennis Finner, Karen, and her son, Ryan Kepetney. Then after that, we were escorted to the Texas Senate where State Representative Judith Zeparini read a resolution to recognize Corns County. Then after lunch, we had some very, very good meetings with the Department of Agiculture, Texas Department of Wildlife, and Texas Department of Transportation, which was very productive. And it was very educational and informative, and we must have done some good work to the Texas Department of Transportation. Because our area engineer got a call phone call the next morning. It's good. We have a, maybe a... Roden Bridge engineer would like to say something about this. We've had a bad problem over the weekend about people stealing our barricades and our signs, moving them, putting them at different locations. I went every morning and every evening on 197, with a bridge that bad was shot with. We put up barricades, had a sign that the bridge was out, went back to the latter evening, somebody stole the bridge outside, taken some of the barricades, threw them on the fence, ran over others, moved cones to different locations. So every morning and every evening, I went out there and called everyone. So, somebody could get hurt or bad, could get killed running that big hole there. If anybody sees anybody or doing anything like that, we would appreciate it, you know, I would play comfort or something. Because it's becoming a very bad problem, stealing signs.
Yes, sir. It's, it's not only a bad problem, it's, it's a real risk to public safety. Some of the holes, you could, a couple of places, you could have put a pickup truck in a couple of those holes. Somebody coming down through there in dark could be relating to you. I mean, this isn't a, this isn't a kid's game. It's real lives you're dealing with. So leave the signs alone, leave them up, respect them, please.
I, I was working on the agreement of purchase and sale, just to make sure with our county attorney, to make sure that it was all correct for this meeting. We worked on that back and forth dating. And also during this, during the rains, I worked with Geester and had multiple calls from the public, answered all the calls that I had to. I was also sent a lot of pictures. The problem with the, the problem with the signs and all that, it's an ongoing thing. It's been, every time we've done these barricades for twenty-something years that I'm aware of, we've always had missing barricades. I, and from what I can remember, we may have caught maybe a couple of people, Sheriff?
Yeah.
Maybe in twenty-something years? And it's usually kids, it's usually kids, like teenagers, a little bit over teenagers, twenty, twenty. And they're real young, and usually it's male.
Commissioner, what, the, the other people that have been doing it sadly are, are truckers. They, they just willfully run over the barricades, pay them no attention to them. And we, they, it's destroying the property, and it's, it's a risk. And so, yeah, our oilfield, as soon as I talk with some of our oilfield partners, I'm going to mention it to their, their folks. And if you guys have a chance, please do, because it's, it's really, there's no reason for it, they can, there's ways around that, we always consider that. So it is, it is more than just the kids, although the kids are still doing...
Yeah, I will be at Conifer tomorrow, and I will mention that.
Thank you.
I have a lot of meetings with these oil companies, I will mention that to them too.
Please.
There's no cameras, or anybody got any kind of cameras around the areas?
No, sir, it's, it's, it's very difficult to catch them with cameras. I mean, it's almost like one of these hidden this type things, although I do have some things in mind to track some of the people that are doing it. So I'm going to come up with some ways of doing it, it's that big of a problem I'm having to look at.
Just in the morning, I was out, and I was up there saying, fishing, and I just put the cones and the barricades back up that they moved. And two trucks got out, and they got out, and they were loading them, and I went up there and I said, "Y'all can't do this." And he said, "Well, we need to get over there." I said, "You're going to have to wait, you can't go this way." They're up here for a reason.
That's all I have, Judge.
Yeah, so then there was some constituents in the precinct, expressing generalized ideas and concerns. They'd go to the Capitol, Commissioner Lixey, and it was a very unique experience. And I feel like not only did we touch a nerve at Texas, we also found some good information from the park of agriculture and forest and wildlife. They've responded, said there's, there's a lot of opportunity for us to bring some additional funds here in the county that can help these, every city here. And the county can also grab some of that too, so it's something that I think we need to look at. Also want to thank the sheriff's department, the constables, Roden Bridge as well. There's quite a few tank batteries that exploded, one of them had actually by the fossil below my house. And so I got to have a fire show, you know, in the evening, so it was kind of interesting. But those guys are out there providing the service very quickly, so I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Item number nineteen, we'll have our reports from our tax assessor collector auditor attorney, can you go first?
Good morning, you're all of y'all this morning. Okay, for the tax collections from the month of March, the current year-to-date for the county was 114,243.33. The current year-to-date for the county was 16,000, I'm sorry, 16,007,377.55, with 97.13% collected. When I left the office this morning, it was 97.63. The delinquent month-to-date was 22,732.12. The year-to-date on the delinquent was 93,503.23, with 29.67% collected. On the county INX, the delinquent month-to-date was 281.94. The delinquent year-to-date was 1,442.35, with 38.17% collected. On the Roden Bridge, the month-to-date was 23,379.79. The current year-to-date was 3,419,292.27, with 97.13% collected. The delinquent month-to-date was 4,430.38. The, the delinquent year-to-date was 18,558.28, with 30.93% collected.
So are we running the average on, on our delinquency?
I think it's about average.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, good morning, Court, again. Okay, you all should have gotten the reports for end of March. So we're at the fifty percent mark, six months into this fiscal year, and we continue to commend all our department heads for being good viewers as well of their budget. commend all our department heads for being good viewers as well of their budgets. I mean, we're at sixty-nine percent remaining to be spent, and it should be a fifty percent square, a ninety percent under for the, for six months. Other items I want to mention are as far as where we're going to be for end of the year, projecting like a sales tax, I have a feeling we're going to be about three million up for what our budget is. On the EMS receipts, about two hundred fifty thousand, and our general interest is about one million, nine hundred thousand. It just hit the markets really turned around. The last item on my report, page eleven, is what you'll vote it on as far as the non-court bills that we pay out. So those are all broken out between payroll, the IRS deductions, payroll taxes, restitution, lines of fees, our G O payment for nine million, nine sixty-three, three thirty-nine, forty last month, and utilities and other items like our health reimbursement accounts posted and so forth. So our total non-court bills for the month of March were eleven million, three fifty-six, three twenty-six, twenty-seven. As far as our investments at the end of March, our total amount that we have invested is ninety million, three thirteen, oh eighty-three point ninety-six, which as the year progresses, we do have to take money out of investment because we get into worry about money at the beginning of the year, but we're still doing phenomenal for where we are right now. Any questions for that? Okay. Right, and? Trey, your report.
Balance as of February twenty-twenty-three, ninety-four million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Receipts for the month of March twenty-twenty-three, thirty-four million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Disbursement for the same time period, thirty-six million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Balance as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, ninety-two million, two hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, item number twenty, you need a motion to approve Trey's report.
I'll make it.
All right, all those in favor, if you can follow my rate in your right hand. Any opposed to that? Thank you.
Just a reminder that our appreciation luncheon is this Thursday.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we need all the elected officials that can come up about eight thirty to set up tables, and we also need desserts from the elected officials as well. We have barbecue, uh, chop bun, barbecue sandwiches coming, but we do need some desserts.
I'm gonna bake some cookies.
Okay, I'll remind myself not to.
Item number twenty-one, uh, discussion slash acknowledgement of personnel changes. This is by all the departments reporting. You have new hires, none, and we have resignations, none. There you go. Red water. Uh, item number twenty-two, payment of bills.
Okay, Court, the total bills for today are two million, two hundred forty-two thousand, seven twenty-seven six. One item I want to point out, forty-eight thousand, five seventeen thirteen was the dirt county hospital bills that y'all pulled. The judge got with G O last week, they agreed to pay that. We received the check yesterday with the Cobra's life officer after even receiving to our bank. They just couldn't pay it out of their funds, because we already have their accounting set up as a vendor, so it's easier for us to pay their reimburseals.
Right. We actually had the money before we even paid the bills, so.
Thank you, Judge, for forty-eight million.
Forty-eight thousand. So the original bill, and thank you to the sheriff's office for negotiating, uh, negotiating it down, because the original bill is closer to a quarter million dollars. And, uh, so they negotiated that down, and then I spoke with, uh, with G O and, uh, likely asked them to, because it was their problem, it took the county's problem.
The majority of our bills today were road and bridge, like two million one. The whole was funded.
Okay. Any questions on the bills? Need a motion to approve them?
How many would pay the bills?
Second. Okay, a motion in a second. All those in favor, sign it by my rate in your right hand. Anybody opposed to, or carries? Uh, item twenty-three, uh, I acknowledge that the commissioners' court will meet at one oh one North Santa Maria Avenue, Suite two hundred, Karn City, Texas, seven eight one one eight. I mean, twenty-fifth of April at nine o'clock, back over at Karn County Storage courtroom. Item number twenty-four, need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to the other gentleman.
All right. Thank you.